Good evening. My name is Tanya Bowers and I would like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I would like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, one country, God, indivisal.
With liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I would like to ask the clerk to call the roll. Tanya Bowers present. Joseph Campos. Paul Mendez.
President.
Kim Laramine.
President.
Abel Campos.
President.
Isaac Myron.
President.
Rachel Teal. Jay Handler.
President.
Jerry Cochrane.
President.
Madam Chair, there are seven members present and we do have a quorum. The Planning Commission is... The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I would like to remind the audience, tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available online on the City of Pasco website so you may follow along with the meeting. At this time, I would like to ask the audience that you mute your microphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you are given the opportunity to address the commission, please raise your hand so that we know that you would like to address the commission. Speak clearly into the microphone and state your name and city of address for our records. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington State law requires public meetings, like the one being held this evening, not only be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington State law prohibits Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. And objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time, or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any items on the agenda? Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? We, as a Planning Commission, need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at this Planning Commission meeting is your only opportunity to get the facts and opinions placed into the official record the city council will use to make its decision. I encourage you to take full advantage of this opportunity. The next item is the approval of the meeting minutes from the March 18, 2021 meeting. These meeting minutes were mailed out to the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them. I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
It's still move.
And seconded?
Just Commissioner Campos, I second it.
Okay, I believe that was Commissioner Laramine as well. So, it has been moved by Commissioner Handler, seconded by Commissioner Laramine. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? So let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. We have a number of items that previously have come before the Planning Commission, and they are here before us on the agenda tonight for us to obtain any further clarification from city staff, for us to discuss these items amongst ourselves, and to come to a conclusion for our recommendation to the city council. The first item is a code amendment, which is House Bill 1923 duplex, triplex, and courtyard apartments. This is master file number CA 2020-001. And we will start our discussion with any further clarifying comments from staff.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Again, this is an item that has been brought to the Planning Commission several times. The public hearing was closed at the March 2021 Planning Commission meeting. A few slides summarizing some of the information we've shared with in the past regarding the intent of House Bill 1923 and the authorization by the state legislature in 2019. Pasco's award from the Department of Commerce for the grant funding program, a part of House Bill 1923, and again, action one, tonight's item, which staff is recommending to the Planning Commission for approval. It is likely, I think, summarize the intent of this effort here. It's likely, based on our analysis and forecasting, that without changes to the municipal code, specifically Title 25, we will not meet the intended growth target within our anticipated urban growth area. Staff would like to also emphasize that tonight's proposal are not requirements. Rather, they offer an array of options to property owners, developers, real estate stakeholders, and those in need of more housing with an array of options available to them. So this is simply an optional effort, an option for folks here. So, outside of that, there's no new information to share with the Planning Commission. The public hearing was closed and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for city staff? Nothing. Alright, if there is no discussion, I would entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Campos.
Yes, Commissioner?
I'll go ahead and go ahead with the motion. Think we discussed this a lot and I think we are well pleased with it. So, I move that Planning Commission recommend to the Pasco City Council the proposed amendments to the Pasco Municipal Code addressing affordable housing and increasing residential building capacities, as contained in the April 16, 2021 Planning Commission's staff report.
Second, Commissioner Cochrane.
Alright, let the show... Oh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show that it was moved by Commissioner A. Campos, seconded by Commissioner Cochrane, and the motion passed unanimously. Mr. Gonzalez, do you want to tell us what's going to happen now?
Yes, so staff will prepare a staff report with Planning Commission's recommendation to the Pasco City Council. We'll also notify the Department of Commerce as this was one of the deliverables regarding our... within our contract on this legislation. So appreciate Planning Commission's effort and interest in this item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And this actually brings us to our next item. This is also unfinished business. It is a code amendment, and it's regarding lots without public street frontage. This is master file CA 2021-005. And we will start our discussion with further clarifying comments from city staff.
Thank you again, members of the Planning Commission. Again, the proposal by staff would update and refine the existing regulations necessary to comply with city council goals, comprehensive plan, growth management strategies, and alignment with existing regulations. On the next slide, you'll see a breakdown of the key changes. They include pavement width increase, removal of the RVS 20 zoning district to comply with growth management strategies, direct reference to the Pasco Design and Construction standards and specifications, and clarifies the application requirements. On the next slide, we have examples that were shown at the March meeting, and we were able to obtain some photos of the two existing or in-developed lots without public frontage sites here in the City of Pasco. So this is the Habitat Cedar Project located just south of East Lewis Street. And you can see that there's a home, and you see the extended driveway. That's that 20-foot frontage that's private, although allows for more units to be placed in the back. And on the next slide, you'll see an overview of what this looks like. This is Joel's addition of Sylvester and Road 56, I believe, 18 lots. Without these lots without public frontage tools, there would have been less lots, buildable lots on this particular site here. So it's obviously been working. Staff's intent here is just to clarify and refine the regulation as requested by council back during adoption. So outside of that, no other information for staff or from staff. I would appreciate or happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez, and I really appreciate having the pictures of both the examples. So with that, Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments for city staff? Yes, Commissioner Handler?
So, at the risk of making you all repeat yourself several times, but you've had, I'm sure, conversations with the fire department on this, right?
Absolutely. In fact, that was one of the main drivers behind the refinements. The current regulations allow for pavement widths down to 13 or 14 feet. After discussions with the fire department and the kind of vehicles that we have here locally, that width could become an obstacle with more denser developments. So staff has obviously worked with Public Works and our fire department to refine the regulation to mitigate that potential impact.
Thank you. One other question about that.
Oh, sorry. 20-foot wide paving, is there going to be parking allowed on that 20 feet?
No, in fact, there's a very slight change that... The current code says that parking may be restricted. We've removed that language and put shall be restricted, also to comply with fire department requests.
Yeah, yes. You got a car parked in the middle of the street and there's a fire, and the truck can't get through, so yeah. Okay, thank you.
If there are no more questions or comments, I would entertain a motion.
I move Planning Commission recommend to the Pasco City Council the proposed amendments to the lots without public street frontage ordinance, as contained in the April 16, 2021 Commission's planning staff report. I think that's supposed to be March, right? Anyway.
Yes. Seconded?
I second that.
Okay, and that was Mendez. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Alright, let the record show it was moved by Commissioner Cochrane, seconded by Commissioner Mendez, and the motion passed unanimously. And Mr. Gonzalez, can you tell us the path forward?
Yes, staff will prepare a staff report to the Pasco City Council for formal adoption.
Terrific. Alright, we are moving along. And next on the agenda is a public hearing. The first item is a code amendment. This is regarding mini storage in a C1 zone and CR zoning districts. And this is master file MF, and MF CA 2021-003. We will start our discussion with comments from city staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you mentioned, this is a continuation of the public hearing that started, actually, I think, two months ago. I think the commission has seen this item plenty of times. I can dispense with the preamble, but it might be best if we can turn to the second page of the staff report and focus perhaps on the summary of the last conversation, the bulleted items, that staff's take on the high points of the discussion that occurred last month, and the last paragraph underneath those bullets talks about the conclusions that the majority of the commission expressed feelings about not utilizing our commercial, at least our retail commercial spaces for the mini storage kinds of uses that we've been discussing. And then, following that conclusion, the motion for a recommendation to city council to adopt the attached proposed code amendment to disallow mini storage uses in C1 and by default in CR, because the CR zone allows everything in the C1 zone. So with that, certainly try to answer any questions. We made the assumption the commission's comfortable proceeding ahead with the recommendation. If not, simply let us know and we'll provide additional information or table this item until the next month's meeting.
Okay. Commissioners, do we have any questions or comments for city staff on this one?
This is Commissioner Campos.
Please, Commissioner Campos.
I don't have a question, just have a comment. I would just like to echo the same thing that fellow commissioner said last month. I do agree, and I have the same sentiment and feelings of just recommending to the Pasco City Council to disallow mini storage in those zoning districts.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Campos.
This is Commissioner Cochrane. I just have a clarifying question. It seems like we're disallowing, but it will allow a special permit in certain circumstances. Am I reading that right, or am I misreading?
No, the... Well, but they're allowed through special permit only now in C1 and CR. So, no, they will not be allowed with a special permit or as a permitted use outright.
Okay, so we're completely eliminating these two zones?
Yes.
So if I were a mini storage baron, where would I then choose? Where are eligible zoning areas that I could build mini storages?
So, any of the industrial zones and the... I think it's general commercial or C3 zones. So the C3 zoning district is... Let me just think of a good sample. Oregon Avenue, for example, is mostly C3 zoning. There's some C3 zoning in very... Well, gee, I can't, I'm drawing a blank now, but probably the best example is Oregon Avenue.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So if there's...
This is Commissioner Myron.
Thank you, Commissioner Myron.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with staff's motion. I think in a previous meeting, I was open to considering some of the alternative approaches, such as site screening and, you know, building barriers. But I agree with these conclusions that preserving retail space, particularly in those key zones, is a major priority. I would note on Broadmoor, you know, that there's been a lot of discussion about some really big upcoming developments in that area. And so I think it's just emphasized for me over this last month the importance of preserving that space. So I'm in favor of staff's motion as they presented it, and I'd be supportive of that recommendation.
Yeah, Commissioner Hammer here. I just want to say, yes, I support what you're doing here and the intent about of it. Even in and around residential areas is not a good idea. So to the extent that you can control and limit this use around these important uses is a great idea, and we should, you know, monitor that very carefully and make it not easy to do. There's plenty of places to build mini storages, you know, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Handler. Alright, if there are no other comments or questions from Commissioners, I will now open the public hearing. Any individuals who wish to speak on this particular item, now is the time to come forward and speak. Please state your name and city of address for the record. And... There being no individuals who have stepped forward to speak, I am going to close the public hearing. Going, going, gone. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
This is Commissioner Myron. This is Commissioner Myron. I move that the Planning Commission recommend the Pasco City Council adopt the proposed code amendment disallowing mini storage uses in C1 and CR zoning districts, as contained in the April 14, 2021 Planning Commission's staff report.
I second it.
Okay. Alright, I'm going to let the record... Oh, we've got a vote on it. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. Let the record show it was moved by Commissioner Myron and seconded by Commissioner Handler, and the motion passed unanimously. Staff, can we have an explanation of the path forward?
So this, as with all code amendments, including the two you just considered, this will go to the city council, probably for one or more workshops, and then from there, we'll take direction from council. Usually it'll involve a decision within several weeks.
Terrific. Thank you very much. And the last item on our agenda this evening is other business. We have an update on the C and E D planning efforts.
Yes, good evening again, members of the Planning Commission staff. Just wants to provide the Planning Commission with a general overview of several of the major planning efforts currently in progress or soon to begin by the department. That includes the Transportation System Master Plan, the Downtown Pasco Master Plan, and the Housing Needs Assessment and Study. Many of these, or actually all of these, are derived from council goals and are important to the implementation of the comprehensive plan policies. So these are more specific efforts aimed at addressing these three particular topics. And I've got a few slides that are excerpts from a recent presentation to the Pasco City Council from our Transportation System Master Plan Consultant, DKS and Associates. So our next few slides, I don't believe we've actually shared this yet with the Planning Commission, so it's just a general overview of the scope of what the master plan is studying or is evaluating, a series of existing conditions, trends, targets, priorities, based on our local visioning, council goals, performance measures, et cetera. And that third box you'll see is going to be critically important to us, and that's our investment strategy, our implementation of a variety of strategies that will come out of the master planning effort. And this is a slide that you may have seen before in a prior amendment proposal by staff, and this shows the safety issues and connectivity and congestion issues here in the City of Pasco. There's a pretty significant and refined transportation modeling effort that's a part of this entire project. And it's evaluated some significant challenges in various parts of the city that will be addressed in the final adoption of the plan. It also includes some of the recommendations. This is one that you saw a few months ago too, with connectivity and spacing standards regarding how to... And this actually comes into play with our comprehensive plans, functional classification system to help the city better identify which streets and roadways have specific classifications as required by the Benton Franklin Council of Governments and the Washington State Department of Transportation. And that comes into play when the city is out looking for grants or additional funding based on a particular road classification. And wanted to point this out because I know that many years ago, the city adopted, I believe, the 2011 Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan. So this will take a look at our existing non-motorized modes here in the City of Pasco and provide a few suggestions for different kinds of bicycle, non-motorized pathways. You can see the two examples, along with the map showing the priority bicycle network. And the implementation steps to improve variety of transportation components here in the City of Pasco, specifically on safety and accessibility. Staffs try to make an improved effort at addressing those challenges at the review level, and also will look forward to implementation of the master plan upon adoption by the Pasco City Council later this summer. So this has been about a year and a half, two years in the making. We've got significant of this already completed. I would say close to 70 or 75%. There's also been significant public outreach that occurred last spring and early summer. I believe there was over 600 specific comments on the initial draft plan. And within the next week or so, staff hopes to have the actual documents and chapters of the plan online, where the public will be able to provide additional comments on the actual plan itself. So we're looking forward to putting that up online and then sharing the results with Planning Commission and city council. So next is one with a lot of attention and activity, and this would be a Downtown Pasco Master Plan. There's quite a bit of infrastructure and funding allocated towards the downtown area. The scope of this plan, well, the RFP was issued. The public proposal was issued earlier this month. We expect to have a selection early this spring. And there's a scope, you can see the bulleted items there with identifying a variety of components that staff, based on council and public input, believes would be important to developing a Downtown Pasco Master Plan, looking at everything from the transportation network. Significant public involvement and engagement will be a component of this, the built environment and urban design standards, including signage, which has been brought up before. And also, I think something that would be important to us is looking at the market feasibility and the analysis that goes into looking at incentives to bring more growth downtown. So we'll be looking forward to this. It's still very early on in this process as the RFP is still out, and we'll provide Planning Commission with updates throughout this process. And the next is the Housing Needs Assessment. So this really is going to take what was just adopted or recommended for approval by the Planning Commission and take it a step further by looking at how else the City of Pasco can address the housing shortages here locally in the city. You can see that the tremendous growth rate, along with the lack of housing today. So we expect to do a more refined, basically a continuation of what we've done with the House Bill 1923 effort. All the data's already been collected and aggregated. All the data's already been collected and aggregated. So that allows whoever selected for this particular item to dig a little bit deeper into the market and feasibility aspect of, of what kind of housing is needed here in the city of Pasco for the community members that live and work here today, and also those here in the future. So we're looking at a significant, um, plan out of this as well. Again, this R P has not yet been released, but we expect to have that by the end of the month and then begin soon after, later this spring, early summer. So really brief updates on some big plans here at the city of Pasco. I'm happy to answer any questions or take any input we can, um, early on in the process. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Gonzalez. Was that a question you had? No, no, go ahead.
Jacob, so one, one thing that concerned me about the downtown master plan development, and I think, ho- hopefully, it'll be considered, and that, and that is, in, in my experience, as I've done a lot of master plan work throughout the country on downtowns, and I've always found that the most successful downtown, downtowns have housing incorporated within. We, you and I've talked about this. And so I know I'm, I'm jumping the gun a little bit here, but I just want to say I encourage thinking about inclu- including housing options in and around, you know, center, center downtown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Handler. All right. Well.
This is Commissioner Myron.
Yes, Mr. Myron.
And also a, a question related to the downtown master plan. I, I think all of these plans and, and, and studies are, are exciting. Specifically relating to downtown, you know, there's a lot of work happening now with Peanut's Park renovation, which is off to a great start. Jacob, what other benefits are there for having a master plan for that district? I mean, does it, is it a tool that, that the city can use down the road for obtaining further funding? You know, what other leveraging opportunities does it, does it give the city to have a plan like that in place?
Yes, I, I think the, outside of identifying existing conditions, and obviously with the input from the community members and business stakeholders downtown, I think what staff would hope to receive are practical implementation strategies, similar to the comprehensive plan and the Transportation System Master Plan. One of the, one of the values out of those two efforts is that staff is left with a plan that can be implemented. And that means us coming back to the planning commission and council and working with, with both bodies to identify solutions based on the analysis and work done by, by the experts. And rather than having a plan kind of sit on a shelf for decades, our intent is to make sure that we choose a, uh, a consultant that is well capable of working within the environment that we have here locally, who understands us, and then providing us with real steps that we can move forward with at a policy, at a policy level. Um, so goals and objectives are obviously nice, but what we need and what we are going to require is, is actual implementation strategies.
I, I might add, Commissioner Myron, that this also helps the, um, public that, that owns businesses downtown, uh, there, in, in recent years, is, there's been, I think, maybe a misunderstanding between different codes. Uh, there's, uh, obviously a zoning code for downtown, but there are also building codes, fire codes, and those are not necessarily under the control of the city. The city operates under control of the state in, in that regard. And there's probably quite a misunderstanding on, um, the impact of those building codes as opposed to zoning codes. Uh, and this is going to be a very good opportunity to, uh, address and certainly analyze the existing zoning code for the downtown area, the core downtown area, and, um, really hear from the business owners and, and try to make sure that we're understanding what the concern is and making sure we're trying to fix the right problem, at least in terms of codes, so to speak.
Well, it's very exciting to hear and certainly a, a really important and useful tool moving forward. And, yeah, thanks for all the steps, steps has taken thus far.
And may I just ask, uh, how long ago were the last time that these plans were completed?
Uh, well, this is the first Transportation System Master Plan. This, I, I know that there was a work plan for downtown adopted by the board, the D P A, back in twenty fourteen. I think that was a five-year plan, and this will be the first Housing Needs Assessment conducted by the city. So in quite a few years from the downtown and brand new for the transportation and housing efforts.
Terrific. I remember when I came on, we just finished the waterfront plan. Was that twenty sixteen?
Yeah, I'm trying to, well, you know, there's a lot of plans.
We got a lot of plans. We got a lot of plans. All right. Well, thank you for keeping us apprised of the plans with the plans uh, that are coming down the pike, and, um, I'm not hearing any other comments or questions. So with that, I am going to suggest that we adjourn our meeting, our commission meeting at seven sixteen. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you.